Joining together in the pledge to the flag, gonna call on our county engineer Lynn Rawls to open the meeting.
Let's pray. Praise the holy Father, give him company today, Lord, and just watch over this meeting today, and Lord be conducting the way that you see fit, Lord. Uh, just pray for those, Lord, that are sick and need your healing hand, Lord, and for those lost loved ones, uh, put your, your, uh, your hand upon them as well, Lord. We know your plan is perfect, and we just ask you to, uh, keep us, uh, mindful of those things, Lord. Ask the Lord now to, uh, to watch over these, uh, commission members, and they've, uh, conduct the business of the county to the best of their ability, and to be more, to bring glory to you, Lord. Praise God, he sends you to both amen and prayer.
Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed. We do appreciate your interest in the business of the commission of the county. Welcome all of you here today. We have no scheduled, uh, public comments this morning, so we will move on to the first item listed on the agenda, under the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have, uh, minutes of the July twenty eighth meeting in your packet, and also the accounts payable and payroll, July, the month of July. And, uh, under those items, we can handle all those items with a single motion. First, ask for corrections or changes that you see that are needed. If not, a motion to approve the items under consent agenda. Alright. Motion and second. Nobody has a correction to note? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, those items are approved. Under old business, uh, we want to, uh, resume discussion on a project that the city of Andalucia is taking the lead on. I see the mayor is here with us, and Mr. Rawls, we appreciate you being in attendance today. Uh, commissioners, you remember that some months ago, uh, the city was with us, and they presented a project that they're undertaking to, uh, serve the citizens throughout the county. It's a splash pad, and, uh, it's a project they're very excited about. The commission heard, uh, their input when they visited with us, and has had a chance to review that. I think it kinda got sidetracked because of the COVID nineteen circumstances, but I, I know that's back on, uh, back on the front burner for the city, and they've asked that we would take it back up for consideration as well. Mayor, I'd love to invite you to come to the podium if you would, if you don't mind, uh, telling us where things are. Yeah, we'd love you to tell us kinda where things are, what your thoughts are, and see if the commissioners have questions.
Sure. Uh, this, this, uh, splash pad is really something we've been working on for several years, to be frank. We, we get a lot of requests from, uh, younger families who, uh, have children that maybe are not large enough to get in the swimming pool yet, but the big folks, and they, they looking for a place where they can go and, and kinda be together, and, uh, and not just from Andalucia, but from all over the area, we get, uh, this request. People go out and see these things other places. Elbows got more, if I'm crying out loud. So, uh, we've been working on it for several years, raising money. We got three hundred thousand dollars ready to go, but we need fifty thousand dollars, uh, to push it over. And we've, we're ready to start. Uh, we're sitting on, on go. Uh, we would like to get it completed, so maybe even this year perhaps, we could use it before the cold weather gets here. And, uh, it'll be located out at Johnson Park. As you go out Stanley Avenue, where you turn right, there to go to Johnson Park. You know, there are two pretty good sized, uh, fields there on either side of that, uh, I think that's, I think that's Chalmers Bryant Drive. The one on the right is where the, where the thing will be located. We decided to put it there because we got all kinda parking out there. We don't have to replicate parking, you know, it, it, it's sort of, uh, de- it'd be sort of designated for the, for the splash pad during the period of time, unless, unless ball season's going on, and of course that, it would be taken up by that as well. But in any event, we got, uh, all the infrastructure is ready to go, and, uh, we're ready to move on it.
Good. Commissioners, y'all have any questions for the mayor? I know you've been studying it for several months, Tommy, a little less time, but you've had a chance, I know, to talk to folks about it, you said, others.
Mayor, were they gonna be able to fence, so they gonna have a?
Oh, it'd be fenced, absolutely. It'd be fenced, it'd be, uh, video, uh, coverage all the time. We decided to put it there, uh, Mr. Commissioner, because we have staff out there all the time. And, uh, we're not gonna have, like, a lifeguard. You don't need a lifeguard at a splash pad, because we expect parents to be there, or grandparents, whoever, with smaller children. But we will have video, and it'd be mon- it will be monitored in the building, which is just right there. So, uh, that was another reason for locating it at that location. Plus, we're already on the land, parking lots there, infrastructure's there. There's no reason to go replicate that and run the cost up to a million dollars.
Would it be, what times would it operate?
I'm sorry?
What times would it operate?
Well, we hadn't got to those details, but, you know, probably will open, depending on what season of the year it is, we'll be open, uh, in the middle of the morning and go to, over later in the afternoon, so parents who get off work and wanna bring their kids can, can do that.
I, I mean, I didn't think it would be open, just whenever somebody wants.
Oh, no, no, it, it, no, it won't be.
Be a regular schedule.
Yeah, there'll be a schedule, and it'll be printed, and, and all of that'll be, uh, on the sign out there to show folks. It'll be lighted. Uh, there, uh, people will have opportunity. The way it's set up, there's some shade structures that go with it, and, uh, where, uh, parents could have little pic pics with their children, uh, birthday parties, those kinds of things. So it'll, it'll, I think it'd be a real asset to, to the whole area.
Now, we'll say this about, uh, city assets, recreation facilities. Here at Florilla, they do make those available, uh, to all the citizens of the county, not just spokes that are citizens of Andalucia. So it's something that we certainly ought to participate in. I think they're looking at a three to four hundred thousand dollar budget.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand dollar budget. And I think the city would love for us to put up three hundred thousand, but we probably aren't ready to do that.
We would love that very much.
Other, other questions, comments, commissioners?
I talked to the mayor a few minutes just after noon about this. I told him some concerns I had, and I think you pretty much put me to rest with that.
Good.
I feel like we need to, yeah, I feel like we need to support the city.
I'll just make one other quick point, and then I hope y'all can take action on it, but, you know, we're working really hard to try to make Covington County, uh, my responsibility, Andalucia, a place where people wanna move back to. And with what's all going on in the big cities with this COVID, we're seeing an exodus of people out of big cities, and they're looking for places like Andalucia, Covington County. But you have to have the quality of life issues that they expect, or they're just not gonna come. It's that simple. So this is one of those quality of life, uh, things that we think is unnecessary, uh, unnecessary, uh, to attract folks back to our, our city, our community.
One question I had about it, uh, is what kinda life expectancy before a major rebuild? Have you seen anything on that? Is it twenty years, fifteen?
Oh, it's, it's a long time, yeah. I mean, you, you know, anytime you got water being pumped, you got issues, and that's just part of it. But none, none of this water is high pressure water. It's just water that's spewing out or bubbling out. It's not, it's not under high pressure. So it's not the kind of pumps that you expect a lot of trouble out of. Uh, the, the material that's on the, that's on the, on the ground, I think, has got like a twenty year life expectancy. And that, of course, depends on how much.
Traffic.
Traffic it gets, but, uh.
Hopefully they'll wear it out quick.
Yeah, you hope, you hope, yeah, we hope we have enough folks coming to, to use it that we have to replace it, uh, in ten years, because that means it's, it's being used properly and, and, uh.
And the water's not recycled, it's.
No, 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 it go, it go, it'll go into our, it'll go into our sewer system, yeah.
Uh, if you'll stay with us here just for a minute, I wanna bring up something else while you're there, but you just hang with us. Uh, commissioners, you've, you've heard, uh, comments, you had a chance to ask questions. It's been on, uh, in front of us for several months, and I know the city is, is wanting to take steps and move forward. What are your thoughts on this?
And we were gonna do this on a five year plan.
Okay, mhm. We can do that. They welcome that if we choose to do it that way, so.
I, I think it's important that we, uh, participate, you know, making the investments in the, uh, the quality of life that we're trying to obtain here in, uh, in the county and in the city. And, uh, I, I move that we support the project, make a fifty thousand dollar donation payable in five yearly installments of ten thousand dollars.
There's a motion?
Second.
I'll say.
Alright, there's a second on that. Any, uh, any further discussion or questions on it?
Think it'd be a big asset to the city and to the citizens of Covington County.
Alright, if there's nothing else, let's vote it all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Hang with us just for a second.
Okay.
Uh, I wanna, I wanna ask you a question while you're at the podium.
Oh, you'll just stay there?
Yeah, just stay there. Uh, we'll let you go after that.
I, I learned a lesson a long time ago practicing law. Uh, when the judge rules in your favor, leave.
You got that one in the bag, so just hang with us.
Okay.
Uh, the, the census is underway, as many of you know. And I know that's, uh, on the front, front burner for the city as well. You guys have put quite a bit of effort into it recent weeks. Uh, we have a report, commissioners, here that shows Covington County has responded at about fifty six point seven percent. This was as of August fourth. Uh, some of our areas of the county have done, uh, better than others. Andalucia is at fifty nine point eight percent, right at sixty, and, but Carolina's seventy one percent. So there are some areas that are doing well, but talk to this mayor about the importance.
Sure. Uh, well, I, you know, the, the, the United States Constitution requires the decennial census to be taken. And, uh, you know, this is twenty twenty, so it's the decennial year. Uh, uh, number one, uh, your, your population, uh, determines on how many representatives you have in Congress. And there's some discussion, uh, because of the growth of some states and the decline, the propo- we think the projected decline maybe in population of Alabama, or at least not growing at the rate that some of the other states are, that we could lose up to two representatives in the Hou- in the House this year for the next ten years. Now, that's, that's just that in and of itself is a reason that we need to work hard, because, uh, we don't want a congressman that represents, uh, one-fourth of the state of Alabama representing us. We want somebody that represents our old, our old district, uh, that we can talk to and know and get to. Uh, secondly, almost every grant, uh, uh, any kind of payment from the federal government, and also the state uses this as well in grants and other payouts, is based upon the census count, the most recent census count, which is every ten years. So once this is done, we stuck with it for ten years. And we're not doing a very good job of, of getting it out, getting it up for some reason. I don't know why. It's very, very easy. Uh, you can go on a handheld iPhone and fill the thing out and send it in. We've got people, uh, in our, we've got city employees now calling folks. I mean, direct, direct call, trying to get people to, to answer, uh, to fill it out. It take you, it take somebody maybe ten minutes to fill the thing out. Uh, it doesn't ask any kinda personal questions. Some people seem to be concerned about that, that it can be used some way to dig into people's lives and find out about it. It's, it's, it's not that at all. It's, it's the same kinda census they've been, been taking for the last hundred and fifty, two hundred years, pretty much. Uh, we are making contact with the, uh, ministerial associations, uh, in Covington County, and asking, I know, I know, uh, the church is not necessarily the place to, uh, to talk about these kinds of things, but this is important. Just ministers to remind folks, please get your census in. Uh, because it, the impact is that big. Uh, and it's particularly, uh, impactful on rural areas, where we depend so much on grants and money coming from the federal government and the state government to help us do the things we have to do. And I know, uh, Lynn can tell you how much he starts out in the hole every year on paving and working on our roads. And if, if we get, if we get cut on what we got coming to us, y'all gonna be in bigger trouble, and we're gonna be in bigger trouble, and our citizens are gonna be in bigger trouble. So it's so important to get, get that census done.
Notice that, uh, one, one area of concern that I have is that the, our, our communities that are lowest in response often are, are heavily minority communities.
Yes.
So we wanna encourage folks that, uh, often, and those are the ones that best qualify.
Yes.
Typically for, uh, federal money, so encourage folks.
They, they, they will be, yeah, they, they'll be, they, they will be impacted disproportionate to us sitting around in this room right here. Uh, no question about it. This, I, I hadn't seen this yet. I, I guess it just came out. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Comment?
It's important. We certainly need to get it out there.
Well, just, you know, as you, as you go through the coffee shops, or you go to lunch, or wherever you are, just mention it to people. Have you, have you done your census?
One, one question I've had is, I know the, uh, libraries have been shut down because of COVID. Are they near reopening?
We're working on schedules on that. We've had some retirements in our, in our, our city library, uh, our, our, uh, our director has retired, so we're, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna put, put it back together. Uh, the COVID in the library is more complicated than it, a, a lot of other things, because you can't disinfect books. I mean, if somebody goes and takes a book, thumbs through it, and looks at it, and then puts it back on the shelf, first off, how you gonna know they pulled it out? And if they do, how you gonna disinfect it afterwards? So we're working on a way to make that safe for people.
I know that's an area that a lot of folks would go, that don't have computers in their home, or an iPhone in their pocket, they could go there to fill out the census.
Well, we, that's, that's another problem we got, of course. When we built that, built the library, or we didn't build it, it was post offices, you know, but when we set it up, and when we put computers in there, you know, computers are just here, and here, and here. So we got, I think we got maybe twelve computers in there, but if we, if we properly distance it, only about three or four of them could be used. But we're looking at trying to get that done, and we hope within the next, uh, but you know, the, the, the census is supposed to end next month. Uh, the president, uh, said it's, said it was gonna end next month. I don't know whether it will or not, but I, I, I think that we gotta at least plan for that.
We do appreciate you coming today.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all. Appreciate the job you do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, wanna go back and pick up one area that I overlooked, just kinda flew through, uh, to get to that first item of public comment from elected officials. Judge, do you have anything? Or Chuck, do you wanna share anything with us?
Okay, just for a second. We completed the abstract, which means what we're gonna collect for twenty twenty for Covington County, and we're at twelve. I showed a couple of the commissioners this earlier, but I also gave Karen a copy where she'll have the breakdown for the county. But it's twelve million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cent is what we will collect in twenty twenty for Covington County. Now, keep in mind, you know, we got the state portion that goes to the state portion, you got the county portion, then you got the schools summary, and then you got all the cities for their portion. But I have this breakdown, and Karen has a copy. If any of y'all need to look at it.
Certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff's here, but we'll come back to you in just a minute. In fact, pretty quick, so get ready. In fact, what about now? Sheriff, why don't you come on up? We'll go to you next, old buddy, and talk about, uh, vehicles from a couple of weeks ago, and then some other things, I think.
A couple of weeks ago, I approached you guys about go ahead and ordering some vehicles. They won't be here till next fiscal year. It just takes a while for them to, to get built and shipped and everything, and payments not due until they arrive. Uh, I initially asked for five vehicles. Uh, I do have a price on them at twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars each. I was, uh, trying to get permission from you guys to go ahead and order either five vehicles, or what you gonna let me order? So.
The, the concern raised last time was that we don't, we don't have the budget completed yet, so we're not exactly sure if we get a, a one this year, or three, or five, or a half one, whatever. We, we, I think the commission would like to wait until we get the budget in hand, so we're looking at another four or five weeks. But we'll keep it on front burner, and as soon as we can pull the trigger on that, unless the commissioner's choose to do different today, we certainly could. But if not, we'll, we'll, we will keep that consideration in front of us and, and act on it quickly. Let's figure out a number. Uh, I think we checked in the, the, uh, the bid, the current bid is open for another, uh, sixty or ninety days.
I believe so.
Yeah?
I believe so. My, my, my only concern is it takes four or five months to, to get these vehicles, and, uh, just this, just this past month, I put two transmissions in, uh, in, uh, some of these older vehicles, and that's three grand apiece, so it's.
Do you know how many we, how many new vehicles we added this, this year when now? Do you recall?
Last, last, this past, this year, we put, uh, three new trucks in patrol. Uh, the sheriff's department bought one, and we also had, uh, three replacements earlier. I believe it was gonna be on the, no, it was this budget too. They were all bought out of sheriff's department funds with three, uh, four pickup trucks.
Okay.
We're trying to get our vehicles mileage down, uh, because these repair bills are, they're astronomical.
So you think we added six new vehicles to the fleet this year, three and three?
Uh, we added, we added seven.
Okay.
Counting, counting, counting what the sheriff's department bought. You guys bought three, we bought four.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
And we, we were able to take some of the high mileage vehicles off the road and replace them with lower mileage.
Good.
Crown Victorias, so they're, uh, they're getting ready to, they're getting ready to, they need replaced too, but they're used for the school resource officer program. Where, uh, actually traveling with them is, is minimal.
Okay. We'll keep that on the agenda, uh, under, uh, old business. Next, next item?
Uh, uh, grant. Uh, we have several grants that we would like to put in. Four of these grants are grants that will not have to have any money matching. Uh, a body camera grant, uh, is, is the main one that we're looking at. Uh, also, uh, we discussed the Sol and Dixon Grant at one time. Uh, I was gonna remind you guys of that, uh, as far as buying some ne- much needed equipment. Uh, I just need to get permission to be able to apply for these grants.
We'll, we'll review the Dixon Grant. I thought we took action to approve.
What we did, I just wanted to remind you of.
Okay, a couple of meetings ago, okay. And so you're asking for just permission to pursue partic- uh.
That's right.
Not specific grants, but just generally grants.
That, that's right, and, and I tell you, uh, Greg, when, when we go and we're starting looking at these grants and everything, the ones that I pursue are the ones that's not gonna take a bunch of money matching or anything. Uh, the, the ballistic vets vest program, you know, we, we, we matched some money on that, but it was matched out of the sheriff's department's funds. Uh, the body camera grant, uh, there won't be any matching funds with that. Uh, so the idea is to be able to look into these grants, make application. If we get them, great, save, uh, the commission and the sheriff's department some money. We don't get them, we'll try again next year.
Okay. So he's asking for permission to move forward on grant applications? Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir. I'd make a motion.
Alright.
Anything you can get certainly help the body cameras, or cameras for the vehicles, or whatever.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, motion and second. Any other questions on this? Uh, you know, the body camera's not requiring match, that's easy. The others that require match, we'd love to be.
I, I would like to be able.
The prize of those as you make.
That's right. I would like to be able to say, look, this is a grant that doesn't require any ma- matching. Let me go ahead and apply for those. The ones that require matching money, of course, I think it'd be right to approach the commission about that.
Alright. So you have a motion and second? If there's nothing else, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. So that's now approval. And we'll come back to the cars.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We will start our budget meeting, what, in September?
Pretty quick.
Soon, so we'll see if all the department heads paperwork back. I can make a packet for you, and we can start looking at it.
I think, I think we got a pretty quick deadline on that.
Alright, next is, uh, an item that probably Judge has an interest in. Judge, if you will, come forward, and, uh, she is trying to improve efficiencies and so forth in the voting process.
She has a lot of interest in this.
Yeah.
What it is, is it's a request to purchase poll pads to use at the, um, precincts during elections. It makes it quicker, simpler, keeps the lines shorter. I just think it would be a big improvement for our county. Um, there's about, I think, twenty-five to thirty counties in the state that are using these. We haven't done this in the past because it would take a big, big amount of money on the front end. The secretary of state's office has received some money through the CARES Act, and they would actually purchase the polling pads for us. I'm looking at getting forty-six. That's, um, six for Andalucia, four for Op, and two for Florilla, and then one for every other precinct in the county. And what it does, instead of the voter having to come in, and the clerk flips through and marks their name off and looks at their ID, this is just a pad where you come in, you swipe your driver's license, the voter confirms that they are the voter, they sign in, get their ballot, and go vote. Now, the county would be responsible for, um, maintenance cost on the tablets, and, and that's one twenty-five a year for each tablet. And then there's also some costs associated with, um, each election. Those would be due during election cycles.
So there's a little bit of ongoing costs. She thinks it's a priority enough to include in her budget for the coming year if we approve the, uh, moving forward with that, and, uh.
Was there some extra pads that we got, so had some malfunctions, do you would be extras that they would pay for, when they pay for?
Yes. It, the pad, I've asked for forty-six. That's tentatively been approved by the secretary of state's office. We're waiting on this. That includes ten extra tablets.
Okay.
So if something, and, and my plan is to go ahead and send the poll book, at least this first election, they'll have the tablet and the poll book. But if something were to happen with the tablet, we would have an extra to send out. I spoke to, um, two probate judges, one in a larger county and one in a smaller county, and they gave it rave reviews. They said it's the best thing that they've ever done. Um, we run into a lot of issues with the crossover voting, because we're all humans and we make mistakes. And the poll workers have to mark that the person received a Democratic ballot or a Republican ballot. And sometimes they're there visiting with the voter, and the wrong one gets marked. And then, then the canvassing board, we have to go through and get orders to open a record of election boxes, and we have to go back and check to make sure that person either received a Democrat ballot or a Republican ballot, so we know how they're supposed to vote in the runoff election. This stops all of this, because the voter would say, I want the Republican ballot or the Democratic ballot. I think it would just make the lines go faster. It could potentially reduce the amount of poll workers we have to have. Uh, it's a step in the right direction. Our system works, but I think this makes it better.
I think also the results came in so quick.
Yes.
The answers, I mean, the number of votes and all would be in so many minutes versus a week.
Yes. Yeah, it, it, this will make things much quicker at the, at the precincts.
The only identification they would have would be a driver's license?
Any, uh, valid picture ID. You can swipe your driver's license. If, if you have a different ID, you type in the first three letters of your first name, first three letters of your last name, and it will pull up your name, your address, and your date of birth, and you identify that that's you. And our clerk is also going to, um, check the ID.
Right.
As another precaution. Just, here's your ID, okay, you sign in, and then get your ballot and go vote.
So they still sign in, even though?
They sign in on the tablet.
On the tablet, okay.
It, we, they came and did a demonstration. It was a pretty impressive piece of equipment. I was very impressed with it. Um, you know, a lot of times the poll workers will have to talk to the voter and say, okay, well, it shows here you voted absentee, and then that voter will have to go vote provisionally. All of that's in this tablet. If, if they check in, it will light up a specific color, so the poll worker knows, okay, well, they're in here as voting absentee, and it just makes it quicker.
Any other questions? I don't think we had a motion yet. Is there a motion, uh, move forward with this?
I'll move a motion.
Alright. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion and second. If there are no further questions, comments, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next item on the agenda, commissioners, on page thirty-four through thirty-seven in your packet, that you'll see an application and paperwork, uh, for a beer, retail beer license request coming from Lewis One Stop in Strong Community. Uh, Mr. Barton, I know that's in your district. Do you have some thoughts on that, or?
Yeah, I think, yes, I think they had a beer license there under previous owner when it was a Tiger Quick Stop. And, uh, I don't know if they're operating under another license at this time, but it's just a formality on our part to, to approve it, because that's all decided by the, uh, ABC Board. So I would go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Alright, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Anybody have questions? Anybody here, uh, want to address that? Kenneth?
I was looking over.
Smith is gonna be on his.
In his lap before long.
If there is nothing, uh, else on the commission, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that item is approved. Mr., do you have items, uh, you wanna bring up today?
Just do your census.
I do think, um, I think we're going well on the garbage. I, I mean, it's really coming along real well. Um, got a lot more people signed up than they had numbers to start with. Was about thirteen hundred more, fourteen hundred more people than actually was on the original list that they got. So I know they're really working hard, and I think they even got more trucks. What I've been told, I think they have up to five trucks now.
Yeah.
And they're starting their routes like at four in the morning. Usually done by lunch, and so that's a good thing, you know, too. Um, I, I don't see any real issues anymore. I know people kind of frustrated, and it was kind of a, a, a change that people didn't know what was happening. But we felt very confident in our decision, and I still very confident in what we done, and I think it's gonna be, prove to be a very good thing, so.
I'm sorry, what, what, what are you talking about?
Garbage.
Garbage?
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't there talk of they were gonna stop picking up from other receptacles other than their own?
Other receptacles.
Was that a, was there a date on that?
Yeah, this week.
Today.
Starting today?
Yesterday, I guess.
Only their receptacles?
So if you had a Republic container, and, and they no longer gonna use it, they're gonna use their own.
Okay.
And they will still continue picking up their big containers, uh, Republic will. And I'm not sh- I'm, I don't know, I've had some people requesting or ask about their refunds, and I'm.
We were the last told that the refunds were issued out on the thirty-first and that they were being processed and mailed out by postal service, and that everyone should be getting those out. Um, we do have an email address of a representative that we can email if someone has not received them, but other than that, it's kind of the only, we don't really play a role in that part of it, that we can line an email, and if someone wanted to call with their own difficulties.
Lynn had something on the road. Lynn? We, we'll ask you, um, Misses, we thinking if you have something else, or a couple of other things. One item of old business, uh, is related to the, uh, Point A Park fire pits. It wasn't specifically on the agenda under old business. But if you wanna act on that today, or I know Tommy, you were looking at that because it's in your district, or do we need to leave that for the next meeting?
Um, we were looking at something more cost effective and more efficient than what we have, not that it's not a good thing. But, uh, there's also the possibility of going with a fire ring. Be, I, I would think, much cheaper, uh, more practical possibly. Um, I think we need to look at getting, getting a price on something of that nature rather than.
Still, still, still did some research on options?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Lynn, did you have anything, uh, any kind of updates to give us?
I'd like to talk about what the, uh, mayor was speaking about, or about the gas tax.
Yeah.
You know, we have a, he mentioned the shortfall, as we have, we have over eight million dollars a year shortfall in our infrastructure for the county. And this affects all local and rural counties like, like ourself. Um, on a fifteen-year recycling cycle, reach further than fifty-year replacement on, for bridges. On that replacement schedule, we, we, we need about ten point four, ten point six million dollars a year just to keep up on that, on that cycle. And we have about a little over two, a little over two million dollars, um, for that use. So we have a shortfall. It's, it's a problem that every county's facing in Alabama, but I just wanna raise that by his attention. And, and this relates back to the census, that the gas tax distribution is based, is population based. So it's very important that we, that we do count every person in the county, make sure we get our, our funds that we need here to help support our, our local, uh, our gas tax here locally. So it's very important for us to, to do that. Um, other, other, other note, I just got a few items. Uh, we got our, our notice to proceed on our, our flat bridges that we've been working on for a few years. Um, and we started driving, uh, our first pile. Uh, we already got the bent-driven grass doing test, um, pile there, um, for the state testing. We're doing it Thursday. Um, and also, uh, we've been working with the, uh, school board, Covington County School Board, with some traffic congestion up there. Strong School Board does some turn lanes up there, and they'll be paving tomorrow or the first thing, um, Thursday morning. I just got a text from the contract whilst in this meeting about that. Um, I got a meeting today with FEMA at two o'clock here at the commission, uh, building today about our recovery scoping meeting for the damage received back on April nineteenth today. As far the, um, like getting our funds for this public assistance funds, what we're, this meeting today, we're having. Um, we're about to throw our pipe replacement on Beaver Dam. We replaced all the pipe on eighty-five. Um, facing, and we're doing Beaver Dam, going to Gilmean Road, and then eighty-nine for the, uh, our, uh,
Motion.
our rebuild Alabama projects. And like I said, they got pushed back due to some, um, stuff superseded our, um, contracts. We're, we're gonna need to go out and pull this, this reservice again, but, uh.
So give me, give me, give me those three roads again that are part of the rebuild Alabama.
There's fours, Camaro eighty-five.
Okay.
Uh, Camaro eighty-nine, and that's using some of our federal aid, our final federal aid money that we have. And I got expended before I could actually get our other federal exchange funds, that was just four hundred thousand. Um, and we got Gilmean Road and Beaver Dam.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, that's it. Our Camaro, one of seven projects, still waiting to hear back from the, the state, uh, historical commissioner on that. I've gotten an email back from the South Alabama, asking more about pavement. Sent in to make sure we get, they gotta get their invoice in this week, uh, get that paid for their, their work, but I'm still waiting to hear back from that. But I also met with the, the, the state, it's, since, since I've started this project, they've, they've come back, um, with us. I've been working with them, we did, we did a little turn lane, right turn lane in that prosecutor there, but that they're now looking with increased traffic on fifty-five to the biggest traffic and everything. They're looking now at possibly a turn, a left turn lane come in. Oh, there's not, there's not one now.
It's on southbound traffic, right?
For south, just for southbound traffic. And I'm meeting with the state Thursday with a proposed deal, said that's what they want. I met with them Wednesday morning up there at the site, and with the increased traffic, the, uh, DOT is, is pushing. Uh, they're doing this all in Connecticut County. Uh, they're pretty much doing everyone on, on US thirty-one now. And I think as projects come up or in areas, they're, they're putting these turn lanes in. Whether it, or it warrants or not, even by their own design standards, uh, they're, they're starting to put all these, these, these turn lanes in. So I'm, I'm, I'm having to fight that fight. I, I've tried my best to keep them from doing it, but, I mean, ultimately, it's a, it's a safety concern that they come up with, so. But you can see seven thousand feet one way and about three thousand for another. It's not a sight distance issue, but I think, that whatever reason, everyone's possibly a turn lane. So that's what we're on now.
So it may be a cost factor, but we, we'll cover, we'll cover that and move forward.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're through it. It's just one of those, one of those things, yes.
Okay.
But we're working deals to on it. I'm surveying today with the timber being cut. I'm getting some, just some survey that we have to move the alignment just, just slightly of the road.
Okay. Anybody have questions? We'll, or other comments, commissioners?
I got just one comment.
Okay.
With our, our grass cutting, and I work, um, I was cutting all the way back, but with the rain and the heat that we've had, our grass is growing like crazy, and we're getting anywhere from twenty to thirty miles a, a day stripping. Now, I mean, strip, we're just cutting a fifteen foot strip on each side of the road to get, where you can at least see, the grass is starting to get tall. And, uh, and it doesn't take, you know, that's twelve hundred, we have almost thirteen hundred, uh, lane miles of that. So you, twelve hundred by about thirty, it takes about forty working days to, just to get the, the grass, just, just stripping. Like I said, it's a huge county. It's a lot, a lot of grass to cut, but we're working, working that way.
More about the new brush color. We, is it insurance yet, the one?
Uh, well, we're waiting on insurance. It's in. We're still waiting on insurance.
Yeah, please get insurance.
Yeah, we are. But the other one's cutting. We're, we're, we're still catching some of the dirt roads that needed, and I hope people are starting to see some of the, and if they have it in your area, call or whatever, if, if there's a road that you got a concern about, um, we'll be glad to try to work it in. They're working just south of town with our small unit right now, and, uh, the other ones, it will be headed back out where it actually caught fire to start with. So we're gonna be back and work in that area.
You're still doing your herb side application also?
Yes, we're spraying dirt roads right now, yes. I said, hoping in two years, we'll have our dirt roads beat back where there won't be the limbs in the year, your bid.
Then we can maintain them later.
Yes.
Uh, I will say this, mine looks much better than my district. You're gonna look much better.
All right, commissioners, anything else? Miss Stephanie, you have anything?
I do not.
All right, if there is nothing else, must adjourn us in order to thank you, stand your adjourn.